Are we quiet?
The Topeka City Council meeting will come to order. Please rise as you are able. Give your attention to Councilwoman Schwartz for the invocation. Remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is my last week to have invocation. And in light of the attacks on Muslims in England yesterday, I think it's... Our golden city should be the home of the golden rule. And I'm a Jew, and I'm introducing the Imam Omar Hazzim. He is a builder by trade and has helped to establish many mosque and Islamic centers in the Kansas City area. He is also one of the founders of the Islamic Center of Topeka. He's a member of the Midland Islamic Council and a member of the Islamic Society of North America. Imam is on the advisory board for the chief of police of the city of Topeka. Imam? I might say that I sat by him at the Holocaust memorial, and I found out he actually has great-grandchildren. If you want to come up to the podium.
Thank you. With God's name, the merciful benefactor, the merciful redeemer. O God, our creator of the heavens and earth and everything contained therein, we come before you today in humble prayer and ask you to have mercy on and give guidance to this governing body of honorable minds, the city council of the city of Topeka. Please grant them the wisdom, the patience, and the courage to make the best decisions for the people and communities that they serve. Reward them for the noble work that they do. Our Lord, help every individual of this council recognize and respect the inherent worth that you, our creator, have given every human soul. We are here this evening to pray for the success of our leaders. We ask you, dear God, to grant success to our mayor, the members of the council of the city of Topeka. We also ask you to guide the citizens of our city to help bring peace to our communities, protect our neighborhoods from the crimes of gang fighting, drugs, killing, drunken drivers, et cetera. Creator of all mankind, as we worship you in our diverse ways and traditions, help us not to forget or neglect our duties and responsibilities in this life. Help us as one community, serve humanity, and foster goodwill in our city. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Imam. There are no proclamations or presentations, so we will proceed with the roll call.
Mayor Wogast.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Claire.
Here.
Ortiz.
Emerson.
Here.
De La Isla.
Jensen.
Present.
Schwartz.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
And Harmon.
Councilman Harmon indicated that he became ill today and will not be here this evening. Councilmembers, you have in front of you with your materials a consent agenda noise resolution, Amos Walker, July 8, that was not received in time to be placed on the consent agenda. Unless there is a reason not to, we will place it on the consent agenda as item E. Is there any displeasure with that? It is so done. We will proceed then with... We also state that there is no executive session at this time. We will proceed then with the consent agenda. The reading of the consent agenda.
A is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller granting Potlin Place Neighborhood Association an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945150 at Seek. B is denial of a tort claim appeal submitted by Sebastian Cuffel in the amount of $1,100 for damages sustained when his bicycle collided with a city vehicle. C are minutes of the regular meeting of June 13, 2017, and special meetings of June 14, 2017, and June 19, 2017, and there are no applications. E is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Sylvia Ortiz granting Amos Walker an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945150 at Seek concerning noise prohibitions.
Okay, that is the consent agenda. Councilman Hiller.
Mayor, I believe that Mr. Cuffel is here, so perhaps we should... I assume he wants to speak.
Well, we can't... And we have to pull it off the consent agenda to do that.
Understood.
All right. We've read the consent agenda, but do you... Is that city manager or city attorney?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman. If there's a request to do that, I would respectfully request that we just pull the item and then refer it back to the legal department for further research, and then we can have another discussion with this body in executive session.
All right. You understand what we're doing. Rather than pulling it off because it is a claim, we're denying it, although there had been negotiations, but we want to review those, look at that differently would be appropriate to do, send it back to legal. So we are actually... We're pulling it off the agenda tonight. It is not on the agenda.
That would be our request.
Why are we sending it back to legal? To do what?
I don't think we want to get into debating the merits of the case in open session, and so I think the best approach, if we're going to try to do that, is to send it back to the legal department for further analysis, maybe some additional negotiations, and then bring it back to council for discussion in an appropriate manner, which would be executive session.
Which would come back to us in an executive session, rather than ending it in a public session. Okay. Councilman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So are we denying it and sending it back to legal? Or we're just pulling it?
We're pulling it.
And sending it?
Yeah.
Oh, we're just pulling it off the agenda?
Actually, we're just pulling it off the agenda is the only... We're removing it from the agenda.
That's correct.
Just for Mr. Cuffel's information, then, I mean, we heard legal again, so I thought they were done with it. But if they would want to visit again, if in fact that second negotiation is not satisfactory, he still...
If that negotiation isn't satisfactory, he still has the opportunity to follow through on an appeal and be heard here, correct?
Certainly, yeah. Actually, in a sense, we're starting this over again.
Okay.
It's going to be go back, and then it will come back to us in an executive session for our discussion, and then depending on the action this council takes, it would come back for an action item.
Just wanted to make sure he knew.
All right. Are we... We're together. Okay. So we have a consent agenda without item B. All right. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please vote yes. Opposed, vote no. The mayor does not vote. I'm sorry. That's very helpful. Councilman Jensen moves to approve the consent agenda. Councilwoman Schwartz seconds. Now, please vote. There's no discussion. The mayor does not vote. I'm sorry. I'm... We're not getting off to a very good start. The mayor does vote on the consent agenda. It's appointments he does not vote on.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the consent agenda is approved as read.
I voted no. It was seven.
I'm sorry. It was...
We have eight yes.
It's eight to one.
Yes.
Yes, eight to one vote.
Councilmember Claire voting no.
Well, then count me in.
All right. That concludes the consent agenda. Mr. Cuffel, so then the legal office will be back in touch with you and we discuss. We will proceed then to the action items. A, resolution.
A is a resolution introduced by interim city manager Doug Gerber approving the 2017 Neighborhood Event and Beautification Grant Program, the Neighborhood Partnership Program, as recommended by the Neighborhood Partnership Program Grant Review Committee.
Mr. Interim City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to ask Councilman Jensen to outline this program, since he helps spearhead it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jensen.
Thank you.
Sorry, didn't recognize you first.
No, that's fine. I don't do the work for the recognition. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'm incredibly excited to introduce this this evening. This is the first of the neighborhood grant programs that we put in place last year. The applicants that have applied this round have been at least approved up to our level. The North Topeka On the Move Association has applied for two items. The Greater Auburndale Neighborhood Association and the College Hill Neighborhood Association have all applied for several events, and then it looks like some bike racks they're interested in. As you recall, we put this program together to help offset some of the costs involved with some of the smaller organizations in our community as they attempt to do community building with required barricades and licensing and that sort of thing to do events. So the whole goal behind this was to help a neighborhood organization that wants to try and better their community get out and do that. And initially, I think this was a huge success. With that, I will move to approve and answer any questions I can.
Councilman Jensen has been moved to approve the resolution. There are second. Councilwoman Claire seconds. Questions, discussion? Councilman Claire.
Was there a... I thought I read this. Was there a cap on what they could ask for?
Yes.
Twenty-five hundred?
Well, it's a match program, so they have to be able to match it up to 100% of what they asked for, but there is a cash cap on it as well.
Which is?
So I believe it was 2,500.
Is it 125?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions, discussion? Councilman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just wondering on the Collins Park, what was that? What did that entail?
Collins Park did not apply.
I thought it was they did.
College Hill.
College Hill.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I got the two mixed up. What did that entail?
They applied for Fourth of July event and entry monuments for 17th Street.
So for the Fourth of July event, what exactly was that? Fireworks or...
No, that's their neighborhood parade. And so then that would be toward the cost of barricades and the licensing fees for the neighborhood processional.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other questions, discussion? Councilwoman Hiller.
Two questions. One, was there any discussion on your part about, or staff's, however you work this, about connecting with the Shawnee County Parks and Rec Department when someone was suggesting either an activity or a permanent installation in a park? I know that came up with the NIA empowerment money, and I just wondered if that had been discussed.
Yes, in fact.
And I'm not objecting to the grants at this point, just for future.
Well, and so the process we put in place required them to have approval from the supervising governmental entity.
Right.
Before they actually moved forward. So if they wanted to do an installation in a park, they would need to read out Shawnee County, discuss that with them, and get some sort of documented approval from them before moving forward.
Well, my question was about cost sharing in that the NIA's in the past have spent money to do improvement... Improve parks, and we talked to you about...
Sure. And that's part of a 100% match as required. So we would only be paying for up to a portion of whatever they're doing.
Okay. And the other question is, I know that this was an inaugural year, and I frankly don't remember if there was a conversation. Would there be another round of grants, since this is not all?
Yes, that's correct. There is intended to be another round of grants, since we haven't used all the money yet.
Thank you.
Later this year?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the way they came up going out? Okay. Other questions or discussion? Seeing none, we... I'm sorry. Councilman Ortiz.
When later this year? Do we know? So we can get the word out?
Let me see what's on my notes here. We may have to ask Sasha. She had sent me that, but... I believe it's in late July and August. Mr. Mayor, I'm asking Sasha Han to come up and address that question. I think she has the answer.
Good evening, governing body members. So our second round, we are planning to kick off June 23. We wanted to get through this meeting and make sure there were nothing we needed to address going forward. And our anticipated timeline to bring the proposed projects to you would be August 22.
You said June the 23?
Yes, ma'am.
So that's just in a few days.
Yes, ma'am.
You want to describe how you get the word out?
We'll work.
So that people are aware to apply.
Yes, sir, Your Honor. We'll work with our city communications department. There'll be a press release. We'll put it on Nextdoor and all of our social media outlets. It's on our website. So we'll push it out to the neighborhood leaders in an email as well.
And that stays open for a month, correct?
Yes. The application period runs from June 23 to July 28.
Excellent. So that gives them time to go work with the Parks and Rec folks if they need to, to figure out. Because obviously, we don't want to sanction installing something that's not been approved to go where it shouldn't be.
Okay. Councilman Claire.
Why are these two so close together? Why wasn't there like one in April and one in August or something?
Because our intent was to expend the money by the end of 2017, and that's very clear and specific in the application materials. So we wanted to open that back up and get additional projects in the queue as quickly as we could. In addition to that, many of the neighborhood groups have summertime events, and so we wanted to see if there were more applications that would come in for their summer parties or fall parties.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Ortiz.
Okay, a couple of questions. So these same entities that have been granted, would they be able to come back and apply?
Yes.
They will?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And this is how you're going to do it twice a year, as opposed to once a year?
No, the only reason we're doing two cycles this year is because we didn't expend all the money in the first cycle.
So what happens if that happens next year?
We won't do two cycles. We'll do a cycle at the beginning of the year, and then if all the money is used up, that will be the end of the program for that budget year.
Was there any discussion, like I know on our SORT grants, I believe it's our SORT grants, they can only come back every so many years? Is there even any discussion like that with this?
At this point, there isn't anything in the grant program that prohibits somebody from coming back year after year. Obviously, they can't use it for the same project if they're building something and it's built. But if you're doing the same event year after year, you could do that with the program, yes.
So you couldn't do phase one, phase two, phase three?
You could, absolutely, yes.
Well, you said the same project. That would be the same project.
Well, so if you put marker stones in the middle of 17th Street, which is what College Hill is applying for, those marker stones would be in place. You wouldn't apply to maintain the marker stones to some degree. You would apply to do something else with that, is my understanding.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
For the example, but there is like movies in the park, so that would be something could be on an annual basis.
Right, yeah.
Something like that. Yeah. Other questions? Yeah.
And that's the reason I ask, because they might want to have another movie in the park.
Yes, and we would encourage them to do so.
So that's a different movie, different time, but it's the same project.
So the doing the same thing again with it required to events is different than if you have the same project and you're just applying for maintenance money essentially.
Okay. And other questions?
Please correct me if I'm wrong on all that, but the idea is to get people working together to improve their neighborhoods or to do community building.
So in response, Councilmember Jensen, the same groups could apply next year, but I do not believe that we intended for this group of, if you award these grants, for them to be able to come back in the second cycle this year. And I'm correcting him. We don't intend to allow the grantees that are approved in this round to apply in the second round this year. They would be eligible to apply next year.
Councilman Emerson.
Mr. Mayor, Sasha, just a question on the timing again. So it opens basically sometime later this week, and then they're due by July 28.
Yes, sir.
Did you say August 22nd when you're going to give the decision?
We anticipate to be able to bring this group the recommendations by August 22.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just to further clarify, this is a new process, obviously, and there's some bumps in the road, as we're seeing here tonight. August 22 is not a council meeting, so we would obviously have something to you on a council meeting evening prior to August 22.
Okay, or after, whatever. Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Councilman Schwartz.
I'll be quick. Thank you, Your Honor. Can you read off the... And I didn't know if he did that or not, but the ones that did get the awards this time, Notoma Concert in the Park series... I'm reading it off Sasha. Notoma Movies in the Park series, Greater Auburndale Bike Racks, Pads for Edgewood Park, College Hill Fourth of July event, College Hill 17th Street Entry Monuments. So these were the grants that were awarded.
These are the grants that are recommended for this body's approval.
How many did we have apply?
That's it.
That's it. So really, we need to get the word out more to our neighborhoods that this is available, since we only had one, two, three, four, five, six, five apply. Okay? Thank you.
Other questions and discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and second to approve the resolution. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
Nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the resolution is approved. Go to item B, resolution.
He is a resolution introduced by interim city manager Doug Gerber, supporting the city of Topeka's application for funding from the Kansas Department of Transportation for bikeways phase three Quincy Elementary Safe Routes to schools and improvements to sidewalks on Southeast 29th Street.
Mr. Interim City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This item reflects our commitment to enhancement of our multimodal plan, bikeways plan, sidewalks, et cetera, throughout the city. This is a process that we engage in. I think it's every two years to apply for these funds from the state of Kansas through the federal government. There are three projects listed here in this resolution, and at its core, what this resolution does for you is put your support out there for these projects. It strengthens our application by having essentially a resolution of support from the governing body of the city. That's a really brief overview. I might have stolen some of Bill's thunder, as usual, but he's going to come up and give you a couple of details on each of the projects and answer any questions you might have.
So go ahead. Thank you. Good evening, council members. As interim city manager indicated, we are in the midst of applying for three grant applications. I believe there is a... And there's still some putting pen to paper here. There was a fourth project that dropped off the list as late as last week, so you do have an amended resolution in front of you in your packet tonight that just contains the three that I'm going to go over, in case there's any questions about that. As was indicated, these grants, again, help us become... Help increase our transportation choices for the city. That's really what we've been going after the last several years and pushing through our bikeways plan, our pedestrian plan, and really trying to invest where we are. So these... The first one is our bikeways phase three. For you, if you've lost count, this is our third go-around with our bikeways implementation. The first two... First one is in the ground and already out there on the streets. The second one will be this year. And then so this will be our third phase, and we've had all... Both of those previously funded through this grant application, through KDOT. So we're hoping to be successful here as well. This particular phase also advances a little bit of a new direction that we want to go with our bikeways implementation. We know that... We know we need to get more... We want more users of our bikeways, and to do that, you have a segment of the population that needs to feel safer. They need to be more comfortable using it. So we call that more of a low-stress network that we want to create. So some of these projects reflect that. There's more protection, more separation in them than just signs and charros on the street. So the... For instance, our high... Kind of our highlight of that package of new bikeways projects would be route number one. This is Eighth Avenue connecting downtown to the medical district. And in the future, we... Well, we currently have charros on the street right now, and so you have a shared lane for both cars and bikes. What we want to do is create bike lanes along Eighth Street, buffered bike lanes at that, five feet of bike lane, three foot of buffer, and then two 11-foot travel lanes. And we think we can do that, given the existing right-of-way. There will be some intersections, actually, that's kind of a hybrid, so we will need to keep a turn lane at some intersections, so we'll lose the buffer, but we will keep a turn lane there. So it's a bit of a hybrid going through that section. And then in addition to that, we also are looking at doing something unique as well for our bike lanes, which is creating a raised lane through the medical district, which creates, again, that sense of separation and some protection, but it doesn't cost as much as completely widening the street, where you get into complete reconstruction of the street. So this is a great idea. We've seen some other communities use, and we think this is a good application of it through the medical district. We've worked with the neighborhood and met with them, and we also may look at putting in... There's not a lot of parking through this section, but we may have to look at putting in some replacement parking, cutback parking along here on a couple of blocks. So that's part of the application as well. Okay. Moving on, the next grant application would be for one that you've seen. Actually, we've applied for this in the past. This is a Quincy Elementary Safe Routes to school, where we've had a plan through the Shawnee County Health Agency. And actually, the city is in the midst of implementing a portion of that, blocks around Quincy Elementary. We actually have funding and design for this year. What this grant is for is to expand that. The blocks we're working on right now are east of Kansas Avenue. This would be mostly Kansas Avenue and west of Kansas Avenue to make that connection. So we are hopeful this time around, this will be received a little better. We were... I think the ask is more appropriate for the program and should be something that fits better, quite honestly, with what they're looking for. So that's the second one. The last or the third grant applications for Southeast 29th is a sidewalk project. Currently, the... And this is the section between the east of Adams. So right now, between Adams and California, you have a... That sidewalk, that yellow line indicates a sidewalk that is currently in place. We also have a project that the city is doing, implementing the pedestrian plan between Minnesota and California on the north side there. So that will be completed this year. What we don't have, and this is the link where we're... It's very critical, is the link between the east of Adams to the golf course driveway, the country club driveway there. That is... This is one of our much-needed safe safety projects. We have people that actually are bumped out into the road occasionally on a very busy street because it is so narrow through there. It's probably a couple of feet with no buffer between that from the wall to the street. There are other portions that are no sidewalk, so there's a Cal path going through there. And so it just is a major safety issue, and helping link the neighborhood through there down to between California and Adams where the services are. So this is... And this is what this program should be for, this grant should be for, because the cost of doing this is pretty significant just for a sidewalk, but since this program's a 20% match, we can get 80% money from the state. That would pay for the extraordinary costs that we have to go through to work with the golf course and move the wall and cut into their property and make that work a little bit. So we think it's a good fit. We've been working with the property owner, the golf course, met with them, and we're going to preserve the integrity of the course, but still make this project work. So I think everything is falling into place. I don't have a detailed estimate yet on it. That's what we're working through, but this could be... I mean, this could be up to a half a million dollars. It may be less, but it's significant. So those are the... That's a summary of the three projects we are proposing to the state for the grant, and I'll stand for any questions if you have any.
In the resolution, it did include the Southwest Topeka Boulevard, but that's what has been removed, correct?
That is correct, Your Honor. That is correct, Your Honor.
Yeah. And just again, these are what are commonly referred to as T-grans.
TA.
TA grants, yes. And they are for specific areas such as this. In other words, we can't just sweep these funds and put them into the streets and put more money toward our bad streets.
Well...
Because some may feel that's, that's a higher priority and...
Let me go back.
...the heck with this.
I forgot to mention something. As your, as your question implies, one of the components that we can, that we're, that we can get out of this is, on all the bikeway streets, not all of them, but most of them, they do need mill and overlay. And so, part of our match will help leverage, actually, mill and overlay money, because we don't want to go in and put bike lanes down on streets that are going to get torn up and are not very ideally travelable anyway. So, I think in a, in a creative sort of way, we are leveraging our, our bike money towards some, some street money, actually.
Yeah. And actually, these grants have allowed us to do many significant, helpful things like this in the city. I didn't mean to be overly gesting, but I think, but they're very important grants like this. And it's, it's mostly state to federal fund.
Your Honor, yeah, this is how we've funded all the trails in the, in the city, all the bikeways that are currently there now, has been funded. The transit agency's bike share program has been funded, and their bus stops are being funded through this program. So, yes, very important.
All right. Questions? Discussion? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I have a little one that goes to Quincy, and I'm glad to see that progress that's going on. It really, really looks good. When I look at all the kids that walk and ride their bike, it's going to take them off that busy street. And so, I'm very grateful that during all that, I know you had to go out and look at all the areas that you chose at. Is that completely around the whole school? Because I seen it on Quincy, and I seen it on the side of the school, but what about the backside of it?
Councilwoman Ortiz, we, the map kind of shows where there are existing sidewalks and where there's proposed sidewalks. So, where you see the dash line would be where we're going in with a proposed sidewalk, either this year, actually, the white, the white dash lines are what we're going in with this year. In fact, I think I just learned we, we have some extra money. We can do a few more dash lines that aren't, that aren't on here. So, which is a good thing. But in terms of back of the school, just around the school, in the blocks right around the school, and that...
Well, Quincy is very unique because all the riders that ride and the parents pick them up are in the back of the school. And so, I turned in a couple of ditches that are big, huge potholes. So, that's why I was asking about that, because there's some that's, did we look at the back there? Because a lot of the kids are waiting on their parents. All the riders are in the back, the bus riders are in the front. They've got it pretty good, they got it organized pretty well. But I just want to make sure that there's enough there that goes all the way by their new parking, by the, new parking next to the new gym and stuff like that.
Oh, yes. We do have sidewalks on Monroe and Quincy and Paramore planned for. So, I think whatever's not in good shape out there right now on those three streets that wrap around the school, those would be part of the project, probably this year, those would be the project for, you'd see improvements this year and not with this, this grant.
Well, again, I think that's great, because we do get a lot of walkers, and a lot of the kids that go there live at the mission. So, there's a lot of walkers. I think Southeast 29th is great. I know a lot of times during the storms, when it's snow out there, there's people in the street where they push the snow back. So, I think that's an excellent thing. I do have one question, if I may, Mr. Mayor. On the Eighth Avenue and how you talked about, I think that's great, how you talked about building that up, but how will the buses pull over? Have we thought about the buses letting off, being able to, because if it's raised, I don't know if they're going to be able to pull up over there, if we want them to do that. So, have we, have we thought about that?
Yes, that's part of, there are some, there are a couple of bus stops that we have to design into whatever we're doing, and that would, that would be part of that. They may have to be, in fact, actually, that might help as a, as a pullout for, for the bus as, as they're using it. So, honestly, there's not enough room in the areas we're talking about using these. It's very narrow as it is right now. So, any additional turnout space, whether it's for bikes or, or buses, is going to only help. But we're not into the design of it yet, just, we may, it'll be done on a case-by-case basis, whichever block has the bus stop. But it is worth noting and taking into consideration with the design.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other questions? Discussion? Councilwoman Emerson?
Bill, I just wanted to thank you and Mark Schreiner. I know you guys have done a lot of work on that Southeast 29th and Adams sidewalk. That's been something, you know, I've basically been in that area my entire life, and that's always been, it's just literally a cal path, you know? And, and just this, this winter, I saw a lady pushing, this is no lie, pushing a baby carriage up the thing. Then she had to go out in the street with the baby, out on 29th Street, and get back in the, in the durst. And I just thought, wow. And, and I know Great Life Fitness has been a very willing partner in this, so I want to thank them. And I know this is not a done deal yet, but I sure hope it does. But I thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Questions? Councilman Hiller?
I want to thank you as well, having served on the Complete Streets Group and the MPO. We, I know how much you've worked on it. Could you briefly tell the council what else will travel with this? Because our city things that we vote on, when it travels to the state, there will be some other proposals from Shawnee County.
Sure.
Would you just let people know?
Sure. Councilwoman Hiller, thank you. In fact, one of the little fun facts, of all the fun facts in here, with our projects and the county, county is proposing a extension of Deer Creek Trail that would connect to Dormwood Park, which is, which currently ends at, I believe, 10th and Deer Creek right now. So, with all those projects being proposed, I think every council district touches one of these projects. Something goes through each council district. In addition, I believe the Transit Authority will be applying for additional bus stop and bike share improvements as well. So, adding on to what they've already...
So, then, we're in competition with many different entities across the state for the funds?
That, that is correct. The, the big ones, Wichita and Kansas City, we're not. But all the, everybody else, we would be thrown into that same pot. And it's 11 million next year and eight, seven or eight million the following year. So, that's throughout the state. So...
Very good. Thank you.
Other questions? Councilman Emerson?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to move for approval.
Okay, it's been moved to approve the resolution. Councilwoman Claire seconds. Discussion? All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. Nine having voted yes, the resolution is approved. We go to item C and ordinance.
C is an ordinance introduced by interim city manager Doug Gerber, amending the district map, referred to and made a part of the zoning ordinances by Section 1850-050 of the Topeka Municipal Code, by providing for certain changes in zoning on property located at 101 North Kansas Avenue from I-2 Heavy Industrial District to D-3 Downtown District.
Mr. Interim City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to invite Mr. Feinberg back up to give an overview of this exciting project that's taking place, 101 North Kansas, south of the river.
Thank you once again. This proposal would effectively change the zoning on this property at the northwest corner of First and Kansas, from heavy industrial to a downtown mixed-use designation, and which is that, which is really good. We're supportive of. The project would encompass 33 loft units from the, on the second, third, and fourth floor, and then, and then parking on the first floor, the ground floor, as well as below. This is, this is really impressive and unprecedented conversion in our downtown and riverfront area. And so, this is part of a historic district, which was just adopted two years ago, the Mill Block. We, so they were going for historic tax credits, kind of drove this, this project. So, that's another feather in our caps for, for moving that forward and leveraging investment. As you can see here, some zoning has already taken place just to the north for D-3, which, which allows for residential. And that's the whole purpose of the zoning, is to allow for residential conversion. However, this obviously will be on a little bit bigger scale. You can see the size of the building there. And so, they will be required to pave or improve the alley in the back there, where they will be taking all the access to the, to the parking that they have under, on the ground floor. If you don't know by now, this is the original log cabin site for the founding town company, or where the town company was organized for Topeka in 1854. So, this is extremely historic site. The building's been there since about 1909. And, and what you see, actually, the picture shows you, the windows are kind of filled in now, but we'll be opening those up with the project. So, very exciting. And I don't have a whole lot more to add to this impressive project, other than to recommend approval. Stand for any questions.
And this did come from the Planning Commission. So, we act as a quasi-judicial body, actually approving the, the action taken by the Planning Commission, and that is where the public hearing was held on this. Questions? Discussion? Councilwoman DeLisla?
I'm sorry? She's going to defer, so I'll move to approve until a second.
Oh, okay. All right. It's your district, you get to approve. Councilwoman Ortiz, you had a question?
Yes, is this the old Seymour Building? Is that right?
Is it?
That's what I know it as. Me too, as long as I've been alive, I've seen more. Are we able to rehab it?
Yes. The project developer has plans already into the state to get tax credits, so they're looking through that process right now. And pretty soon, they'll be into the city for permits. So, this, this zoning will allow that to, to take place.
I'm just worried about, like, how old the building is, asbestos, and all of that. And they look into all that? They consider all that?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then, our revitalization, does that, does that qualify for that?
Yeah, for the tax rebate? Absolutely, it would. So, they'll, they'll combine the historic tax credits, as well as the neighborhood revitalization rebates with that. So, it's a double, double sort of incentive that they're using of existing programs.
If it's been standing that long, as good as it is, it must be made pretty good.
It's solid.
It must be solid building.
Well, Mr. Mayor, there was another building that was standing that they just tore down.
Yeah, that was a Hills Building.
And that, but I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, we got buildings standing all over. That doesn't mean that they're good. That, that was my concern.
I think, and that building had to be down because of the, increasing the levy was a part of that.
Right.
But this also, when the flood went through here, so it's been...
But we got a school on that year, or, I mean, we've got, we've got buildings standing all over, but I'm, I'm just, just curious.
Yeah. Other questions? Discussion? We have, yeah...
I had wanted to make a comment, and only that, and I didn't even say, they did a great job, they did a great public hearing, and all the neighbors were there, which is a good thing, both for this project as well as for development in that area. Bill, if you would go back to the slide, the first one, I think, yeah, the next one is easier, I think. There are already lofts in the, in the purple spot. Mike Fox has developed those. There are already, and Mike, I'm going to watch for you to nod to me, but the people that have purchased the property across the street are getting ready to put lofts across the street as well, on the other side of Kansas Avenue. Is that right?
No, don't, let's not put him on the spot.
Okay. I thought it was in the paper just the other day, so I'll leave it. But I've always wanted to see this, this area turn into lofts, and it's really exciting to me to see that happen. And so, just hats off to everybody involved.
Okay. Another discussion? We have a motion and a second before us. All, all those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. And I know Mike Wilson standing, thank you, thank you for your leadership in this development. It is appreciated. We go to item D.
D is discussion of and possible action on the 2018 proposed City of Topeka operating budget.
Okay. Mr. Interim City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. As you know, I oftentimes like to give a brief recap before we do an item. So, we, I think it's always important to look back on kind of where we've been. And tonight, we're at a point where we've had many months of, and many opportunities for public input, formal and otherwise. We've had three separate budget meetings. We've had a budget discussion as part of a city council meeting. We've had many one-on-one discussions, many Q and A follow-ups. And so, tonight, we are at the point where we think we're ready to wrap up this process. Our intent tonight is twofold, really. The first is to go through any questions that might be remaining on the budget. You do have the final supplement, supplement number four, that was emailed out to you last week, but it's also at your place this evening. So, in just a second, I'll ask Nick Hawkins to come up and address that or any other questions. And then, the secondary purpose of this evening is to, if there are any changes or amendments, additions or deletions that the council would like to make to the budget, we anticipate that this evening is that, is the time to do that. Before I ask Nick to come up, I do want to address one thing, that you received an email from our finance director late this afternoon. As you know, we got our values from the county late last week, and since that time, we've been working to try to understand what those numbers mean and try to make sure that they are in fact accurate. So, I would take, I would say two things in relation to that email and what we've learned. And the first is, good news, valuations are growing, which means the community is growing and expanding. And I think we can see that, we can read about it. So, that's, that's the part that's worth celebrating, and that's the really good news. And I don't want that to get lost, because I think that's really important, emphasize all the great things that are happening here. However, the valuation did not grow as much as anticipated in the original budget, to a tune of about $250,000, impacting the general fund. Again, that was spelled out in the email that Ms. Lee sent you late this afternoon. So, I want to make sure that that's understood. As she noted in her email, we think after we get whatever amendments there might be, we'll go back to the drawing board and, and put all that together and come back to you with a budget July 11th. That does not raise the mill levy. I mean, that's, that's the goal. We've heard from the beginning, and that's, that's going to be our intent moving forward. I would stop and answer any questions you might have.
And, you know, and just on that, so $250,000, do you see that, that requires reductions in some areas? Or are there some things of contingency, or something that we would be able to not start over on the budget and find $253,000?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I think to that point, we, we want to make sure that we have a full picture. And so, whatever amendments might happen this evening, we'll incorporate all of those together. But certainly, we don't view it as a need to start over or do anything drastic like that. We think, whether it's contingency or something else, that those funds will be able to be addressed within the context of the budget.
Okay. Questions on that? All right.
Okay. Then with your permission, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Nick Hawkins to come up, and he will briefly walk through the budget supplement for the Q and A, and then work to address any other questions that might be outstanding.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Nick Hawkins with the Budget Office. As the interim city manager noted, you have supplement four in your packet and four kind of brief questions that we were able to answer, and we sent those out on, on Friday afternoon. I will briefly go over them, and if there are any questions on that, happy to answer them or try to answer them to the best of my ability. So, the first question came up during our discussion on the Motor Fuel Fund, providing more details on the storage of our de-icer. At any given time, the city stores about 28,000 gallons of liquid de-icer... At any given time, the city stores about 28,000 gallons of liquid de-icer that has a 30-day shelf life and gets updated as needed. We also carry 5,000 tons of treated salt, and that does not expire, so if we don't use some one year, stays over the next, and that's less we have to buy future. You know, the average winter weather event consumes about 600 tons of salt, and the city has averaged 4,200 tons of treated salt annually. The second question was related to the Retirement Reserve Fund, and how the debt service was being paid on that. A portion is being paid in the Retirement Reserve Fund, about 250,000. The rest of that, a little over $1 million, is paid in the Debt Service Fund, and that will expire in 2019. Third, there was a question on the infill housing program, and just basically, what happens with the sale of those houses? That goes back into the CDBG fund, and is used for more infill housing purposes. And then fourth, there was a request to provide more information on visits to the Wellness Center. You can see on your chart, this is year-to-date. How many unique visitors are there each month, and then the total visits by month? And there are a number of trainings and other things that go on that the HR department sponsors, that go along with the wellness incentive, that are highlighted in this response. So with that, I'll open up any questions.
Are there any questions? Item discussion on that supplement four. Seeing none.
Mr. Mayor, that goes through one piece of what our intent was tonight, and that is to finalize any questions that you might have. At this point, I think you had maybe wanted to go around, and...
Well, yeah. First, I was going to ask, March whenever, months ago, we determined the goals for the budget for this year. I would like to ask, perhaps from the Director of Finance, or, to what extent are we meeting those goals, or what are examples that we have achieved, the goals set out, that the council voted as our goals for the budget? And she did not know that in advance, so that's...
So the budget priorities, I think, the best kind of summarized place to see how this budget reflects on that is in the City Manager's letter, in the introductory part of the budget. Let me point you to... So on page five of the budget document, we have those very high-level concepts. So invest in infrastructure, continue a commitment to public safety, continue a commitment to neighborhoods, and then, under each of those, we bulleted out how we believe this budget speaks to that. So this certainly isn't the all-inclusive list, but kind of calls out what in this budget changes to specifically address those. I think, from the top moving down, probably the most significant one that we've been highlighting is the investment in infrastructure related to the PCI goal. So that's kind of the biggest example that we talk about there, but again, pointing out the parking study, that's one that we spent some time discussing. Public safety, that's certainly been another highlight of this budget, especially related to the advanced life support discussion. That's probably the biggest change there. And then also wanting to focus, it hasn't come up a lot during this budget process, but continuing our efforts related to mental health, as it relates to public safety. Developing neighborhoods, really, this has been an area that we've been growing and having a focus on a lot during the past few budgets. So while we haven't maybe added specific resources to this area this year, we think maintaining the amounts that have been added, so the demolition services, dollar amount in there. And then again, the neighborhood infrastructure and the street lighting programs that we've added in prior years, we're continuing. Quality of life, that's one that, again, has been a very big point of discussion in this budget, and we believe that the amounts of money that remain in this budget related to T-PAC, to the Downtown Redevelopment Incentive Program, to the arts, money, youth employment, all speak to that quality of life. And then again, the downtown pocket park maintenance. Fiscal sustainability, this budget reflects continuing the fund balance and the cash balances, reflecting the policy that this governing body has put into place. And then, again, continuing focusing and putting special emphasis on the utility budgets, especially as it relates to the finances. And then the last budget there, the performance and cost effectiveness, just continuing our open data and our performance portals, and emphasizing those. So if that's, I'd say, the kind of the best summary of how this budget speaks to your priorities, if that's okay with you.
Sure. Questions? Comments? Discussion? Okay, and actually, we had talked about, there've been a number of times, discussion about amendments, how we went and proposed those, how they were handled, and it's been suggested that perhaps, if they're, in order for all of us to know what amendments are going to be proposed, that we go around and just state, in other words, I propose adding, I'm going to propose adding $30,000 to this. And it's sort of like first readings. We won't discuss, we won't ask questions, but then everybody knows ahead of time what's coming, and you sort of, as we make decisions, individual amendments, that can be helpful. Does that make sense? I see you're nodding.
Sure.
No one strongly? Okay. We'll go here, and Councilman Hiller. However, you want to say this?
I had had a couple of proposals in mind. I have to say that the fact that we're not going to have the revenue really threw me. And we got the announcement yesterday, and didn't have any idea how much that meant. It's not as bad as I thought, but I just will confess that it has thrown me about proposing anything specific today. I will throw out that we all know that there's been maybe not as much discussion within this body as with lots of input from citizens about the issues of Keep America Beautiful, arts funding, downtown incentives, and T-PAC, all of which I would say fit in the quality of life bucket, that is so important to us, and has obviously been, if you will, raising our boat. If anybody wants to talk about those this evening, I'm willing to do it. Stop short of making a proposal at that time. I know they've been real divisive, and I don't want to spend a lot of time on them today. There is still time between now and the public hearing in August, which of course is for people to speak up, and a final vote, if it's a little soon right now. So I'll just throw that out. Thank you.
Okay. And, you know, but why do we do that? Very quickly now, and what is the schedule? Tonight, you want to do that? One there, the next, actually, two months, our schedule moving this forward.
Sure. So this, having this meeting tonight keeps us on track to be on the budget calendar that we've had since the beginning. So the proposal would be that, at the July 11th meeting, we would set the maximum taxes levied and set the public hearing. And that's a statutorily required, you must do that 10 days out from publishing and from having the public hearing. So with the limited meetings we have in July, there's really not a whole lot of options there. So that would occur on July 11th, the public hearing would be August 8th, and then budget adoption on August 15th.
Okay. So the 11th is really a pro forma. We really, we just take this action, and it's announced. And then the next August 8th is a hearing, and whatever. Councilman Claire.
I have a couple. I want to move $20,000 from youth unemployment and put it in our connect. I've been told that that's enough money to do the youth unemployment. And I want to increase the police budget to get some of the officers, so we get up to where we're supposed to be for public safety in our officers. And I'm not sure, I think we need to think about maybe decreasing the neighborhood grant that we talked about tonight, from 25 to maybe 15,000, and not push, push, push to spend it all. Those are my three.
All right. Councilman Ortiz? I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just so the council, or the body is aware, that has been reduced in this proposed budget.
The last...
The original budget that we presented had that amount at 12,500, I believe. Yes?
Which one?
Sorry. For the, yes, the neighborhood grant program.
It went down to 12,000.
It's in this year at 25. Is that right?
But this new one?
In 2017.
It's in 2017. 2017 budget for 25,000. It's in the 2018 budget, proposed, for 12,500. We reduced it to reflect more what the grant applications came in this time. We thought that was an appropriate movement.
Okay. Councilman Ortiz?
One of the questions that I had, and I didn't get it in time, I apologize. Nikki, can you tell me, I know there was talk about putting some money in to get the... Did you get that email from Angela? I see you shaking your head.
Yep. And sorry, that came very...
Yeah, I was at the doctor's office, I apologize.
Let me pull it in here.
We're looking at getting some of the, not the ROTC, but the...
AmeriCorps.
AmeriCorps. And I just wanted to, I wanted to know how much that would cost us. I love the AmeriCorps. I think it's, they've done a great job coming in. But the thing that concerns me is our inmate program. Would they bump out our inmate program? And I love our inmate program, because they have done a remarkable job cleaning up areas of the city that people don't want to clean up, or if we got a mattress over here, they've done a really good job about going through them and cleaning up areas. And they're year-round, so I really didn't quite understand why we need to pay them to get them, or what that was really for. Can somebody answer that?
We'll get back.
If it's all right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have...
Okay, since this is a question?
Yes.
Then be helpful. Just take care of it this time.
Yes.
So to answer your question, Councilmember Ortiz, the AmeriCorps team, last year, we paid approximately $4,000 for their housing cost. This year, Monique was able to secure an anonymous donor to pay that cost. We have about $1,000 in incidental supplies for them, but they are not only, they've done some cleanup work for us, but they're also working with our department and neighborhood groups on community building, neighborhood building activities. So they're, they have done some cleanup, some rock the blocks in some of our neighborhoods, but it's completely different than the inmate program and the work that we're doing with that group.
Right. But they're similar, but they're different in some ways. One of the things that I will be proposing is, I've got a meeting with the school superintendent to make sure, you know, Hayden does it, Washmore Rule does it, everybody does it. They have to have so many volunteer hours before they can graduate, but 501 doesn't do that. And I think this would be a perfect opportunity to have them students do that, so that they're able to be a part of the city. The only way we're going to make them become a part is to make them a part, and being a part of cleaning up, or whatever, whatever we need them to do. And I know Monique has utilized a lot of 501 students, but I think, once we mandated that for their diplomas, that will give us a bigger pool of kids, as opposed to that. So how much money is in the budget for the AmeriCorps?
In 2018 budget, I think, now that I'm listening to you, you may be talking about the AmeriCorps VISTA program. And we did propose to the City Manager in our 2018 proposed budget, I believe it's about $12,000. That would get us three of those VISTA volunteers, but there, it would be full-time staff people for that cost.
For how long?
Three years.
For how long? For every day, for three years?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that just the summer, or is that...
No. Full-time, 2,080 hours a year, in terms of that, that would be approximately the full-time work.
And why do we do that?
Well, they come all year, is that...
Yes.
I think that's what, they're not just summer, they're full, their calendar...
They would be here for three years. We would have one cycle in, a new one each year, I believe. Why would we do that? Because the VISTA group provides a really amazing program that we'd like to be part of. Monique has two people in her division to do community engagement with 127,000 people. So she can, she looks for opportunities like that to partner and leverage her resources. She has about a $20,000 budget for community engagement.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I also wanted to, I've talked to the City Manager about this. We need more staff for our fire department. Another clerical, and I'd like to see us put in another full-time clerical there. I've talked to you about that, Doug, and I know we've talked about some other people that work there. But I think it's really something that we really need to look at, that has been taken away, that they really, really need. I know the guys go in, and they...
So you would like to make this as amendment, you're proposing amendment to do this tonight? Okay. Why don't we wait to the discussion until we get on them individually?
I had one more, but I'll have to flip through my notes.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are two things that I would like to add some funding into the budget for, and they're both, they were both some of those social service organizations that were very close to the line, but they didn't quite make the 90% or 89% we're looking for. However, I think that the bang for the buck, and the importance of the mission of these two organizations, I think are worthy of consideration. And so I would like to propose adding $14,000 to the Keep America Beautiful Fund. Have had some discussions with the county, and I, this may be the wrong number, but I believe they fund it to the tune of about $40,000 a year. And one of the, there are thousands of hours that Keep America Beautiful gives throughout the year, as well as they donate, I want to say about $10,000 in trash, I believe just material supplies. So we're basically only giving them 4,000 over what we would have had to spend anyway. And the second thing is the Parent-Child Learning Center. That is an organization that exists, it's at Highland Park High School, but it's for all 501 schools. I had the privilege of going over there this year, they're having their 25th anniversary of that program being started, and I have to tell you, the things they do are amazing. Kids that have a child when they're in high school, instead of that being basically the end of their career, as far as a student, they can take part in this, and those kids are well taken care of. It's a lot of like grandmother types in there. That's just a fantastic, in my opinion, a fantastic organization, and something I think we should support, and I would ask for $7,000 for that. Thank you.
Councilman DeLeesla?
Thank you, Mayor Wolgas. Very much like Councilwoman Hiller, when I came here today, I was planning on a few comments to say, I was very interested in figuring out what we could do for the social services. I was trying to figure out what we could do for the arts, and what we could do for the downtown redevelopment process. However, knowing that we have close to half a million, a quarter of a million dollars that we're short, gives me pause, because that's a quarter of a million dollars, in addition to whatever amendments come out tonight, we could be looking at half a million dollars, which is half a mil. And it's just very concerning to me that we do want to make sure that we give to all of our organizations. I mean, like I said, I did have the idea of going ahead and supporting some of some things, but at the same time, my concern is, at what point in time are we going to continue stretching this budget and try to make it function? It just concerns me for the fiscal responsibility aspect of this. Because if it would have been $100,000 of a difference, that's, you know, we could find $100,000 in a heartbeat. But this is half a million dollars that we may be talking about, considering the fact that we have to cover a quarter of a million dollars. So I'm just concerned, I have these organizations that I'm very passionate about, that I feel that are not so much because I'm passionate about it, because I think that they're doing amazing things for the community. My concern is, at what point in time are we going to keep on looking at our budget and try to keep pulling out money from services that we're supposed to be providing to our city?
Councilman Jensen?
Thank you. I'll echo the comments of my colleague to the left. I have similar reservations about things we were unable to fund at the level we would like to, and then similar reservations about the fact that we may not have as much as we had thought to make those amendments. I will share my incredible gratitude to the staff that works on the budget, as well as all of you, my colleagues, in trying to sort through what is a very, very important and very hard-to-do process. I appreciate everyone taking this as seriously as we do. This is one of the most important things we do on a... This is one of the most important things we do on a yearly basis as the council, and I want to thank everyone for their work and effort, and to Nikki and your team, good luck with your pencils.
All right, Councilman Schwartz.
I have no amendments. I would like to say that I thank the staff. My first two years on the council, I voted against the budget because it raised taxes. And I really believe that the staff has really tried to make it work without having to raise taxes. So there's maybe some concern about finding, you know, a quarter of a million dollars, and that may come later, but hopefully our revenues will increase. It's just like when I was in the state legislature, and the estimated revenues, you didn't really know how they were going to come in or not, but if we get more in, and we grow, things are exciting in Topeka now, I hope to see the revenues grow. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any revisions tonight. I asked ahead of time, when we had a private meeting, that we try to find some more money for some streets, to fix some streets, and I said, is there a way that you can find a million dollars somewhere? And they came back with 2 million. So I'd like to commend the staff for that.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, I hope that was helpful, get a, for the playing field where we are, and what our future this evening looks like, and we can start back. Councilman Hiller, if you want to, if you want to, I think now we're ready for amendments, and we'll have amendment, well, of course, we go by legal and finance, that it's appropriate for what we can do, and we'll have a second, and we'll vote, okay? Yes, I'm sorry, Councilman, or inter, city manager.
Mr. Mayor, if I could interject, we, it also discussed that certainly you can, but there's, it's not necessary to say I'd like to get 20,000 here and take it from here. If you just want to offer an amount...
Yeah.
That you think is appropriate, then, then again, we'll, we'll go back to the, making the sausage, and try to figure out how to put it together at the end.
Yeah.
It's appropriate if you want to, but it's not necessary.
Or, or in a sense, it's almost two different motions. I move to increase here, and then I move to decrease here. It usually works better than putting it all into one.
Correct.
Okay, question, Councilman Ortiz.
Yeah, you know, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nikki's probably going to kill me, but Nikki, do you have any way of knowing, like, I know there's a lot of new stuff that's in the budget, do you have any way of knowing how much all of the new things cost that weren't there last year? How much that would total?
I'd say the best way to look at it is the changes to the budget year over year, so...
But I mean, would you have a total of that? And maybe, this is a year that we sacrifice, and we don't do anything new, and we wait another year. I remember one time on the council, we did that. We, was it 10%? Everybody had to cut 10% mayor, was it? 10% or 20%?
Well, that, that page 510 of the budget book, where they...
Page what?
You list the increases and decreases.
So page, page 10, I'd say gets us partway there, because it just shows what changed year over year, but this is really kind of separated by account. I'd say the better way to look at what you're saying is, kind of looking at a whole program. So for example, streets, I mean, this is kind of pieces of it, but not the whole thing, so I don't think there's really one place in the budget that it's singled out, but we can all tell you, or we could answer questions about what we know is new in the budget.
I just didn't know if that would get us there.
Yeah, I mean, really, I think that when departments presented, on, the night they presented in June, we specifically told them, focus on things that are new to the budget. So if you think back, and we can even pull those up about the items that they presented on, those were the new items in the budget.
Additions to the current.
But, but I don't have a figure, a money figure.
Yeah, we'd have to, we could pull that together, but we don't have something here ready to go for that.
Mr. Interim City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, maybe, I think Nikki gave a great answer, maybe to expand on that just a bit, looking at it programmatically, there's two ma, this is mostly a status quo budget, I would say, but there's two major programmatic changes. The first is trying to implement the street improvement plan that we have, want to get into place, and that's $2 million, as we've talked about, 1.2 from the general fund, which would be more of our focus. And then the second major programmatic impact to the general fund budget is the addition of ALS for the fire service, which was about a quarter of a million dollars. So those are really the two major programmatic changes for this budget. There's other changes, certainly, but those are the big-ticket items.
Okay, that's helpful. Councilwoman Hiller.
Yeah, I was looking at the sheet that we got early, and that, you know, that lists the, certainly the streets, the ALS, and then four new positions, which is probably about $400,000.
Right.
Round numbers.
Do you wish to make an amendment, propose an amendment?
Well, when I, when I volunteered that, I said, if, if somebody else wanted to do it, I'd be happy to talk about it. I heard the arts come up from Councilwoman Clear, and I heard Keep America Beautiful come up from Councilwoman Emerson, so I'm happy to join in those discussions. I didn't hear anybody mention any of the others at this point.
So at this point, you're passed?
Yes.
All right, go to Councilwoman Clear.
I would like to see, I did talk to Human Resource Director Jackie Russell, and she said that the youth and employment, they don't need 50,000 to do that program, that they could do it with 30. So if we could, then, put that money to Arts Connect, which has cut 20,000, so those two would balance out. I know in our strategic planning, that safe and secure communities is our number one top priority, and I've struggled with this since I came on the council, from talking to Chief Brown also, that we are, we have been down 17 officers pretty consistently. And I was talking the other day, and, and reading in the paper also, the standoff had a dozen officers there, with their, when there's a really bad car accident, five officers go, and that kind of leaves, somebody's open, because there's not enough officers. So I don't know if we can have some information on the number of officers we have, what has been the level that we've had for years, like 300 and something that we should have, and what, something else I received was the number of calls holding. So when you call 911, if it's not a priority one, you're kind of put in a queue, and you get another call in, and say it's a priority one, well, that, priority two or three still stay there. So our average number of hold, holding call statuses, the average amount of time from January to this June that they hold is 2 hours and 34 minutes. So the average number of calls being held is for 2 hours and 34 minutes, unless it's priority one. There's an average of 51 minutes per shift per day, and 74 days with no call holding status. So if you're the person that doesn't have a priority one, and you're calling, and you're waiting, 2 hours and 30 minutes is a long time. And the only way to get that down is have more officers. So if, if we can have, I don't know if...
Okay, why don't we, okay, you, you made those first two.
Okay.
Do you want to move, you, you talked about the one with the youth program.
Yes.
I think we take that one. You want to move that we reduce the funding for the youth program by...
20?
By 20,000. And let, just, and stop there, and then we'll have another motion, we increase the arts program by 20,000.
Or we can do, as Mr. Gerber said, and just say, add 20,000 to arts.
Okay. All right, so if you...
Because I don't care where it comes from.
You, you can move that we add 20,000 to the arts program.
Yes.
Okay, and finance, legal, that's, you're okay. Is there a second?
I'll second, to add 20...
Add 20,000?
Not saying where it's coming from.
No, no, we're just adding.
I'll second after the arts program.
All right. Okay, now...
Are you, I have a question. Are you still going to propose the cut, the corresponding cut afterward?
Assuming this passes.
It could be a separate item, I get it.
Well, not if I don't have to, not if you can find it somewhere else.
I think we need to wait, I think...
Yeah, I, I think we just...
I agree, but if, if there's more comfort, if we've identified a source.
Yeah, unless there's a cut.
Okay, that's my point. So maybe she should go first with what she had.
Well, and we could, we could make this a joint motion, I mean, we could put, we could put them together.
It certainly, they could be both put together, and I didn't mean to throw a wrench in this.
Or do the cut first.
We could get into a lot of debate, trying to find, not different line items about where it should come from.
Yeah, I know, that's why we usually, I mean, if Councilwoman Clear is moving, we put in this much for more police, we don't want to stop, and where are we going to get it?
Can we have a discussion on the time?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we will.
I think we need to be at a discussion on the time.
All right.
So 20, I move that 20,000 be found somewhere and be put into Arts Connect.
That's what you seconded?
I seconded it.
I'm sorry, Councilman Ortiz seconded. And you can state in the discussion that if necessary, you can reduce the program by that, or...
Yes, because they don't need that, she stated they did not need that.
I want to second, if it's coming out of youth, I want to second.
All right, that's why we have one issue.
Okay.
Okay, we have an issue to increase the arts funding by 20,000. Discussion.
I want to second it, please.
Increase, did I, I'm sorry, thank you. We're going to read increase, we're only increasing here, we're going to increase funding for the arts program by 20,000. Councilman Jensen.
Thank you. So do we have a deficit budget now?
Councilman Jensen, in light of the reduction in evaluations?
Right.
Increased evaluations, but not as much as we thought?
Yes. So we do not have a half-million-dollar buffer that we need to do any of the changes that anyone will propose this evening?
Councilman, I don't know that we ever had a buffer necessarily, we, we, our goal was to bring you a balanced budget.
Right.
That did not raise the mill levy, and that, that's what we presented you with.
So, given that we have no money to give anyone else money, how are you all going to come up with the money? I can't support something if I know it's giving you an impossible task. So if you tell me that you can come up with half a million dollars to fund all this stuff, I'm fine with that. I don't want to direct you to have to go print money, because I know that's not possible, as much as I may advocate for it on a regular basis from this chair. So if you all can do that, I would like to know. Councilman Jensen.
I believe that the answer is yes. If this body adopts amendments without cuts, within what I've heard so far, I think we can go back into the budget and find ways to tweak it, to do what we need to, to make sure it comes in balance still. Do I have specific ideas of where those things might come from at this point?
And I...
No, I mean, yes, but no.
Okay. I mean, I, I, or the other, we have a $260 million budget, and 30, 20,000 is a pocket change.
Agreed.
You don't want to make overstatement.
Right.
But, it's, there will be funds, or we're not sure, the assessed valuation may change by the time of December.
And I, you know, that's my only concern is, you know, if we, we're already running in the red, I don't want to put us more in the red.
Yeah, I agree.
But if we're not, and we're, I mean, we have the best finance team you can get, so if they tell us we're good, then I'm fine with that, but...
Okay.
Those are my concerns.
I'll expand on my answer just a little bit. As you know, this happens almost every year, right?
Every year.
So this isn't anything new.
Agreed.
So we all have to think back to last year, and the year before, and the year before, and 10 years ago, I mean, it just...
Not 10 years, because we were here till 3 o'clock in the morning.
We don't go back there.
We don't go back there.
Yeah, it typically happens, and on July 11th, so between now and July 11th, we'll, we'll figure out what we need to do, and then on July 11th, we will bring you back a list that outlines the additions and the subtractions, again, to get you to a balanced budget that everyone here desires. It happened.
So would it be possible to just make these...
Just a second, okay, wait for your call to dawn, so that we don't just have general discussion.
I thought we were still discussing my question.
All right, did you have another question?
Well, it's a follow-up to that. So would it make more sense then for us to make these proposals, have them figure out how to fund them, and then vote on them as part of a complete budget, rather than spitball how this might be done?
I think procedurally, that's part of the vote that you make on July 11th, to set the maximum taxes levy. That's essentially what you're doing on that night, is solidifying the motions that you'd made prior to that night.
And that's where you say you'll come back with, the amendments we make tonight, you'll have a new or revised budget reflecting these changes, and how they would be funded?
Yeah, so I'm, I mean, I'm looking at the, like, the item from last year, you'll see, you've got the official form, and it shows the mill levy, and the total taxes levied, and then behind it is a memo that will line out, here's what you added, here's how we found it, here's where we changed it, and so if that's not acceptable at that point, then I believe that's the time that you would say, no, this isn't, you know, this isn't acceptable, we still want to set the maximum taxes levied at this point, but we want to direct staff either that night or over the next month to kind of redo one of our proposed solutions.
So, and actually, at, back in years, we've had, we have an ending balance of the budget, as, which is about how much, at the present time, what is our ending balance, which we want to maintain for credit ratings.
Mr. Mayor, in the general fund, you know, for round numbers, it's a $100 million budget, we have about a 20% to 22% contingency, so 20 to 22 million dollars in, on balance.
Okay, and at times, we've gone this night to say, we're going to take maybe 50,000 more out of the ending balance, I mean, you find a source, but we don't want to do that, but, I mean, there are, those are the types of things that can, can be considered.
I'll just reiterate, this be, this is your budget, I'm confident that we can do what we need to, to meet your wishes, and give you a balanced budget.
And I'm just trying to say, you know, the different possibilities that there are. Other questions? Okay, Councilman DeLees.
And I think that that just answered my question. So my biggest heartburn was, are we going to pull money out of the programs that we already have committed to? And if that is, if we're going to have to pull money from fire, from police, from water, from sewer, then it makes absolutely no, it's not fiscally responsible for us to do that. Now, if what you're telling me is that we have a magical contingency fund, that we're going to pull out from one time, and that you are all comfortable saying that we understand that we already have to pull from that magic fund, quarter of a million dollars to cover what we put, and that what we're hearing from the council is, hey, we have close to quarter of a million more, because I kind of know what these amendments are going to cost, if you're putting the, so that means that you have a magical fund of half a million dollars that we'll be able to pull from, without touching any of the departments? Is that what I'm hearing?
Councilwoman, I don't know that you should be hearing that we're guaranteed to pull everything from contingency, but I think you should hear, it's a good backstop for us, if there are other places as we dig in, and aren't able to find those funds. It would not be our intent to make major programmatic cuts, major departmental cuts. As you know, we've already asked departments to cut 1% going into this budget, so I don't think it would be our intent to ask for any additional cuts from departments, at least not ones that they couldn't agree to, or be comfortable with. Does that help?
Councilman Hiller.
This is interesting, because I've been back and forth with Nikki quite a bit, going, okay, I mean, for those of us that have been involved in this budgeting before, and some of us have been for a number of years, we are shifting how we're doing it this year, so I can feel us kind of coming up with maybe where we're going to end up, because rather than, what I'm hearing, I think, is that rather than voting on what would be considered final amendments tonight, correct me if I'm not hearing this, that in effect, what we'd be doing is voting on what we would like to see, and then, however that needs to be framed in a motion, and then you will come back with us and show us what that would look like, and we then, at that point, would have to say, okay, we're comfortable with that, or, mm, that's a little too tight, we're going to have to figure out $100,000 of what we wanted, and take it back out, or whatever.
I just would say, I don't know that that's a difference. Instead, when I've been here, that's been our approach every time, is that in July, we've kind of reemphasized, here are the changes, here are the adjustments. So I don't, I don't believe that it's really different, maybe feels different, because the committee setup is different, so it's a special committee as a whole versus a budget committee, then getting kicked to the whole council.
Yeah.
And then it's always different based on how much money you have. You either have more than you thought, or less than you thought, so that changes the whole tone of what we bring in July.
It just, it seems, there's, what I'm sensing is a discomfort in voting these things one at a time, which there's no better way to do it, and then not knowing where we're going to end up until we get there, and not, and feeling like we can't look back even ourselves tonight, and go, mm, or at least be able to send it to you, and know we're going to see it again before it's final. That's, that's all I was sensing, and so if that's technically what we voted on tonight, would just be a message to you, and you would bring it back, then maybe I'm sensing more comfort with that approach.
Well, the other is, I see the interim city manager saying, it's our budget. If we want, a majority of us wants something in it, I think their duty is to find out how we do it. That's it. It's our budget now.
But what we're hearing is, it's a pretty general sense, that we're not sure where it would come from, and until we know.
But I think that's, that's what they do.
I understand.
And that's what they're, that's what they're hired to do. Okay, we have a motion before, I'm sorry, Councilman Ortiz.
Well, and I would just hope that we would discuss, I hear Sandra saying, I want more police officers too, but there's a process. We can't just give the police department $200,000 and expect tomorrow, which people have done that, expected those officers are going to be on the streets, Sandra, it doesn't happen like that. It's, to me, it's not about funding, it's about the recruitment, that we've done a better job at, the interns that we've hired, that's not what they're called, but cadets, the cadet program that we put into place. I think we're slowly getting there, but we can give them more money, but we're not going to get more officers out there until they have to go through the process, and until they're able to get out on the streets. I think the VIPS has done a good job at some of our calls, that this car's over here, and come and tag it. I think they've done a better job at that. I too want to see more people on the street, but I'm not convinced that more money is going to do that until we get them to the, through the academy, and we can send 25 through the academy, and maybe 12 come out. That's still not going to put more people on the street. So I think we need to look at that. Another thing is, I know everybody comes with their budget, and they ask for what they want, but at the end of the day, even if we don't specifically give them to that, give them what they ask for, they find a way in their budget to make sure that they get what they want, whether it's more people, more of the kids, or whatever, they find a way in their budget to do that. They always have, and they always will. So I just think we need to really, really look at that before some of these things, and if that's not explained to you that well, then I think we need to get with the chief and be, and remind the council that there is a process, there is a process, because I always know that there's, most of the time, they don't even spend their whole budget, so I would agree with the mayor, the finance, that's their job, that's their task, and I'd like to see them do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion before us to increase the funding for the arts program by $20,000.
Who's the second?
Yes.
Who was the second?
Councilwoman Ortiz. The motion is remaining that we increase by 20,000. It is not, it is not saying where we are taking the money. Is that correct? All right. Okay. Any discussion on that motion to increase that funding by 20,000? Hearing none, all those in favor, vote yes, opposed, vote no.
We have eight yes, Mr. Cohen voting no.
Eight having voted yes, the amendment is approved. Councilman Claire, and I think that's, we've gone through a process, but this is, we're sort of come together and know what we're doing here. Councilman Claire.
My second one, I understand they cannot hire up to their level because it's not budgeted, so unless they have the money to do it, they won't ever get there anyway. So if they can come up and explain that, I would appreciate it.
Talk about the police.
Yes, the police.
Okay.
On how we get, what they think.
Do you want to handle it, and/or work with the police?
I'll take a stab at it. Chief and the councilwoman and I, we've had multiple conversations about this, so I think what I say won't be a surprise, but to Councilwoman Ortiz's point, this is largely, I think, about recruiting. For example, in our last academy, the police department was authorized to recruit 20 individuals, and we were able to get a class of 12, I believe. And so it's not, for lack of trying, we were willing to grant those additional eight folks, it just, for lots of reasons, we weren't able to get them through that entire process. So we've looked at it from a very basic and fundamental level. We've tried to, as we've talked about, we're going to have two recruiting classes a year, set dates, and then we, I really, really think that's going to make a big difference, just to keep stuff moving. We're also bringing people on earlier in the process, so that they don't get poached from other agencies, so we can bring them on and do some of the stuff, some of the more benign training that we are doing at the end of the process, do it early, while we're paying them and getting a benefit, and then we're also working on some potential signing bonuses for recruits. So these things, I think, are going to have a major impact. As you said, those won't happen until next year, and so we won't know, but I'm optimistic that they're going to have an impact on what we're doing.
So how many officers do we have on the street now, and how many is our max?
I'll ask Chief Kramer to come up and address that.
Okay.
Our authorized strength is 295. Our actual, on the street today as it sits, is 277. I believe we're currently 18 down. The 295 is actually budgeted for, it's just, as the city manager said, is the recruiting and getting the applicants into the department.
I was going to say, the 295 are on the streets.
295 is our authorized strength.
For the whole department?
For sworn officers.
Okay.
We actually have 277 today, so we're 18 down.
So we're, yeah, we're together.
Okay, so if you had 17 people that wanted to transfer into Topeka tomorrow, you can do that?
Yes. We actually have lateral transfer too, which, which is an abbreviated academy, and six months, or six weeks of writing, and then you're out.
So how many police officers have we had in a max, like, over the last 10 years?
We've been as high as 302. Our most recent, I believe, was 300. We made some adjustments in 15, 16, down to 295.
Why?
Part of that, Gretchen, part of that was the cadet program, yeah, absolutely, please.
Those were attrition from commander positions over the years. We had five additional commanders, I believe, around 2013, 2014, and slowly, we turned those positions into vacancies to determine what was most needed, and then they were turned into cadet positions. But they weren't actually officers on the street, they were like a second deputy chief, an additional major, additional captain, things like that. And you guys had requested that the commanders be reduced from previous years.
And I was going to bring that up, because at one time, we had an effort in the last couple of years to put more officers on the streets. Do you want to speak to that? If that, to what extent that occurred?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch all the questions.
We had a support or interest in placing more of the officers on the streets, out of the office on the streets, and is that to what extent did that occur?
From command level, I believe some of those positions, part of that money was put back into or reduced to officer levels. So if we lost a commander, part of that pay, or part of that salary package went to, was transferred over to officers, so yes.
Okay, a couple more questions. Do you think we have enough officers on the street?
The, in looking at the Department of Justice, their average is about 2.1 per thousand citizens.
Okay.
And at full strength, 295, we're at 2.34, so we're slightly above the national average by the Department of Justice, so.
So what can't, and this probably isn't the time, no, I'll talk to you later, because then I want the calls held down, if we have enough officers to get on it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And I, I think we all hear your point.
You know what I mean?
And we are, we are aware, and I think we're supportive of all the, whatever needs to be done, to have full positions, and reduce time waiting to respond. Councilman Ortiz.
I just want to add, and I think we've all been invited to the recruitment process. Gogian, what is he, a lieutenant? I get the rankings messed up. He did a fine job, you guys need to really go, because we do a good job at the recruitment process and getting the word out there. You know what the problem is? The problem is, they can't pass the test, and that's one of the problems. The other problem is, we get them there, they fill out the application, and they don't come back, because they can't pass the test. So what he's done, and he's passed the gavel on to...
Officer Campos.
Okay, okay, well, he's passed the gavel on to Campos. What they're trying to do is get these kids in, or I should say, young adults, they're trying to get them in, and they're trying to help them to pass the test, the math part of it, and that's the part that they lack, that's the part of our recruitment process that really, really lacks. So I have to really give it to them that have started that process, that are looking at across the board and saying, where is the breakdown? And they found that in the application process. So we get applications, we just don't get them coming back taking the test.
Yeah, we actually, we actually had 49 people sign up for the June 2nd test, we had 20 show up.
See.
It's a big drop, and who actually signs up to take it, and those that actually show up.
And I just wanted to say that, because I think that was very important to say, and go through that process, and if you look at it and really live it, and you know, Sandra, this has been an ongoing thing for me, is we need more men on the street, so I take that with all sincerity, and I appreciate you bringing that up.
Okay.
I have a question related to that one.
All right, has to be related, because you can't bring up something new.
I know, I know.
You had your chance.
To me, because I knew we were fully funded for the police department, and that we were short on being able to get the recruits in, my question is, and we talked about this before at budget, if they were able to build up the classes, I want to talk about the vacancy factor for a minute, because we're counting on the vacancy factor to balance this budget, and if the department was able to get more ahead on the recruiting and filling of those classes, have you all considered that, in whatever that sweet spot is, in the estimates on the vacancy factor? Because that's where the money would be.
So to that point, I mean, that's a great, it's always kind of a balance, and like you said, sweet spot, I mean, that's perfect, is that, just like all of our, a lot of governmental entities, you really count on those savings.
Right.
To help you at the end of the year, but at the same time, you don't want to not be providing services. We think that even increasing the vacancy credits this year has given us quite a bit of a buffer, so last year, we came in over $3 million of personnel savings, so even at 2 million, we really believe that we can be proactive with filling our police department spots and meet that credit target.
Thank you.
Good, thank you, good point. Moving on, Councilwoman Ortiz, you have amendments you wish to make.
I think somebody said, keep America beautiful, I would, I would support that funding.
No, 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 no.
And I would just like to look at us, I know, like I said, the one time, this, the first time, I know that's, I know that's going to be hard, but I think somewhere we can, we can find that, and also to take out the...
And we can come back, you will, you will get another opportunity to do it. Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Do you want me to now formally make an amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, well, in consultation with a colleague here, I guess I would like to move that we
amend the budget by?
By $25,000. That would be 10,000 going to Keep America Beautiful, 5,000 to the Parent-Child Learning Center, and 10,000 to the Topeka Youth Project.
Do you want to split those out? It could be some benefit, or do you have feelings about one or not the other, or we can put it as a package?
I don't, these, these were three that were all within like 1% of making the cut.
All right.
And is, am I wrong, is this clear? Okay, okay. Well, the, a couple of them are very close.
And say them again.
Yes.
5,000?
Yeah, 10,000 to Keep America Beautiful, seven, excuse me, 5,000 to the Parent-Child Learning Center, and 10,000 to the Topeka Youth Project.
Now, there are different parts of the Topeka Youth Project.
Youth Court.
Thank you. The Youth Court.
Yes.
They didn't even have 10,000.
Topeka Youth, Topeka Youth Project, Youth Court.
Well, my colleague has misinformed me, I'm sorry, Mrs. Hiller. Okay, let me restate that then, please. 10,000, so back to the original, yeah, 10,000 to Keep America Beautiful, yeah, 5,000 to the Parent-Child Learning Center, and 5,000 to the Topeka Youth Project, Youth Court. And I, I would like to say, I think we can, if, I don't know if it's appropriate to do in the, well, I guess I have to make that motion first, then wait.
Yeah, okay, we have a motion on the floor to increase $25,000.
20.
Oh, I'm sorry, 5, 10?
Yeah, 10 to the Keep America Beautiful, 5 to the Parent-Child Learning Center, and 5 to...
Oh, sorry, I did 5.
We changed it, so.
Okay.
You were correct originally.
Move to increase budget by $20,000 for those three items, 5, 10, and 5. Keep America Beautiful, Parent-Child, and Topeka Youth Project, Youth Court. Now, do you want to speak anymore? Okay, we have a second, Councilman De La Isla. Now, discussion, if you want to speak anymore.
Well, thank you, Your Honor. As I said before, I'll let, I'll defer to my colleague on the Topeka Youth Project Youth Court, because that's something I am not as familiar with. These two other things, I think, give us much, much greater return than we put into them, and I guess that is, that is my reasoning here. I think there's a lot of places where we, we have a lot of things in this budget, you know, we probably have several hundred thousand dollars in pens and pencils in this budget, and, you know, and here, and here are some things that are people doing good work every day, and I guess, I think this is a pittance that we can easily find in the budget.
All right, Councilman De La Isla.
And Mayor Wilk, that's the only reason that I'm going ahead and proposing that, that we do this for all three organizations, is because if we're going to go ahead, and it seems like there is ample desire in the body to make the amendment for one organization, there were three organizations that came to us asking us for help, and it would be really unfair for us as a body to say, we're going to play favors with one organization, and then have other organizations that also came to us in a review process, that presented to the committee, and say, we're going to go ahead and do that for one. If we're going to do it for one, we're going to do it for all.
Okay, Councilman Claire, then, Hiller.
I think this really disrespects the process. I think it disrespects the committee. I think it disrespects staff. And really, if you're going to start with the ones that had 89, and go down to Keep America Beautiful, who had 76, you've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 of those, and if you're just going to pull out numbers out of the air and give them, we might as well throw this away and not do this. But add all these up, and it's 102,000, to be fair. So we'd have to find 102,000, throw away what we did, but then, you're really, you're missing one, you only have one person left that had 57, are you just going to say, sorry, what's our cutoff now is 70, you didn't make it? Are you going to do it also, which is another 20,000? So we have the process for a reason. I think this should have been brought up at the committee level, and not now at the budget time, but I want to prove this, I will not. But I want to prove that, so I will not.
Okay. Councilwoman Hiller.
I was not on the committee, so I was not privy and didn't participate in the appeals or anything like that. I know that we set up the committee so that we, it had a process and a scoring, and I know that they worked really hard. And so I am, my concern about keep America beautiful was that the major argument there was that it didn't fit. That the way that the process and so on was set up, it had to do with human services and human changes in behavior and so on. And that this has been going on for some years, actually, that somehow it didn't fit. And so I was looking forward to the committee dealing with that later. Others were human services programs that simply didn't score. We really didn't, the council predated a number of people here, put that process into the committee process so that the appeals would not be end arounds, so that it would be focused in. I have some questions personally about the process, and we talked a little bit at the meeting before, that when we reviewed priorities and procedure for next year, we might even all, as a council, look at it first. I am really uncomfortable going back in on the social services and changing those as a package. But this darn keep America beautiful thing's been hanging out for a long time, and it is such, beautifying our community and the quality of life and engaging volunteers from the community has been such a big deal. And that was also a contracted service. So money was set aside and intent was set aside by the council to make sure that we hired somebody to do that. And if it wasn't them, and again, I didn't speak up because at that time, the city manager had said that they'd found money elsewhere and it was going to be taken care of, and I'll find, that's done for this year. But I, that's why I'm willing to look at that one, just because what are we going to do if they're not providing those services for us? That's just me, and there's a hand waving back there. So I'm not comfortable voting on them as a package, but would be willing to talk through separately.
Councilwoman DeLaEsla.
Thank you, Mayor Wolgas. And you see, and I know that it's a challenging position to be with, but if we're going to invalidate the work of the committee for one organization, we're going to invalidate it for all. Because if three organizations showed up and they had a chance to appeal, and we're going to come in and we're going to get lobbied so that we change one organization, then it's not fair for do it for one, we're going to do it for all. And that is just my point. Because I agree with Ms. Claire, it would be disrespectful to go ahead and do it. So if we're going to reverse the process, then we'll reverse the whole process.
Councilwoman Jensen.
Thank you. I'll just quickly agree. These are all wonderful organizations, they do incredible work, but we have committees for a reason, and I respect the committee's wishes in what they delivered to us. I do appreciate you bringing it up, though. Again, those organizations do incredible work. Unfortunately, I don't feel this is the place for this discussion to be had.
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we have to remember, things are sit to committee to be looked at, but we all have a right to vote on how we feel. And if we feel that we should support keep America beautiful, for whatever reason, I think that we have that right. To me, it's no disrespect to the committee, it's just looking at the whole picture. I too would like to look at the process because I've always said since day one, what about the new guy that can't come in scoring? I question if this is the second time that keep America beautiful has had a problem with filling out their application, why aren't we helping them to tell them what they're doing wrong? You know, and I don't know if that's been done or not, but I'm just, I'm just saying because I think that's very important. You know, I think that should be across the board and everywhere, that we should help them because it should be a fair playing level for, playing field for everybody.
All right. Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Your Honor. My husband always says, a dollar here, a dollar there. Pretty soon, you're talking about real money. And I do agree that we have a committee process and we need to respect that. Last year, I added a grant writer to the budget, and we have seen some really successes in grant writing. One of the researches that I did on a grant writer for a city, there were several cities that had grant writers that not only wrote grants for the city, but they also got to the point where they assisted our smaller organizations on how to write a grant, even writing a grant to the city. There is grant money now out there. I just helped write a $40,000 grant for someone. And I think that we just are not seeking that grant money enough. And so I won't support, you know, adding more, you know, another 20,000 a year. But I do hope that in the next year, that our city can look at what other cities are doing to help organizations in their communities to get this money.
Very good, thank you. Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I was on the ECD committee, as my colleagues know. I did want to point out, my reasons, my reasons for this was, as you guys remember, on the Parent-Child Learning Center, I did vote, vote in the, I guess I was the non prevailing vote on that, just because I thought that was so important. Just, and some of it was probably my personal involvement, or I'd been there and seen it up close. The second thing was, though, on keep America beautiful, I think as Councilwoman Hiller said, I was under the impression until just today that that was already funded, and thus I did not speak up the night when we agreed to accept the recommendations of the committee. I thought there was other funding they were getting in lieu of this. So that is why I did not speak up that night, and that's why I brought it up now.
All right. Other questions? Discussion? We have a motion a second before us. Councilwoman Hiller.
One other thing regarding the size of the grants, and again, I was going to wait, and we'll still bring it up when we have our discussion about ECD in the future. But one of our, one of the parameters for the grants in the outline, as I understand it, it's been in there the last couple of years and remains, is that we, the goal would be to not make any grants under $10,000. And the discussion back when that was passed was so that it was cost effective for the agency, as well as cost effective for the city to administer on both ends. And so we've snuck under that a little bit, not as far as you're recommending. Once again, I think when we have our discussion, we'll be able to get back to that subject as well. Thank you.
Other discussion? We have a motion. Councilwoman Ortiz.
I just want to say to Elaine, you know, Elaine, I do take you very seriously when you say, look for grants. I found a grant that I sent to Monique and she checked it out. It was for the youth, it was a huge grant. We couldn't get it because we were a government entity. So, you know, things like that happen.
Okay, very good. We have a motion before us to add 20,000 to the budget for three of the social service agencies that were in that area. Another discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. It's a motion to add 20,000 to the budget, 5,000 for parent-child, 10,000 for keep America beautiful, and 5,000 for Topeka Youth Project, a youth court. Okay? If you'll vote, vote yes, vote no. I wished, I pressed, could I, could we vote again, please?
Yes.
Okay, now?
Just a second. Okay, now you can start again. We have six no. Ortiz, Emerson, and DeLaEsla voting yes.
Six having voted no, the amendment is defeated. It is now approximately 8 o'clock. We've been here two hours. I suggest we take a break. We're half, almost halfway around. And come back and we will continue.